Welcome. I'm going to have everybody stand. The flag on the flag.
Congratulations to God and the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to take a few minutes right now to have Denise Ducharme come up. She would like to read something that Jack wants to offer up. So Denise is going to just speak for a few minutes.
Thank you very much. On behalf of State Representative Jack Ducharme, I'd like to read the following. To Mr. Tim Curtis, manager. Dear Tim, as your town manager, as your time as town manager in Madison comes to a close, I wanted to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you for all of the support you have given our community, your hometown, over these past eight years. You will leave big shoes to fill. Since you became Madison's town manager in July 2015, Madison has gone through a tremendous amount of change, beginning with the loss of UPM Madison Paper in 2016. Your steady, consistent leadership of the town was critical in shepherding Madison through this loss. You found creative ways for us to maintain services for the citizens without exploding the tax rate. You look for ways to market Madison throughout the state that have ended up in things like the rail trail, Weston Woods and Waters, and soon Timber HP will be in production at the site of the old mill. Your communication skills have kept the citizens of Madison so well informed that town meetings, selectmen meetings, and other public events have little controversy, as most are so well informed. Thankfully, our loss in Madison will be our county's gain. I hope that your experiences from Madison will help guide you as you embark on your next adventure as the Somerset County Administrator. You know that should I ever be of assistance to you in your new role or elsewhere, that you can always reach me. Again, thank you for your great work for the town of Madison and congratulations on your well-deserved next chapter. Best wishes.
It's a lot easier coming from you than from Jack. Appreciate it.
Greetings to Ms. Kathy Estes, resident uptown Madison in the county of Somerset, Maine. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Madison and said county and state qualified by law to vote in the town affairs. To meet at the Madison Junior High School Auditorium in said town on Monday, the 12th day of June 2023 A.D., at 7:00 in the evening, then and there to act upon Articles 1 and Articles 3 through 35, as set out below to it. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at the said meeting. Do I hear any nominations?
I've nominated Erin Hilton.
Do we have second?
Second.
Any further nominations? Hearing none, those of you who wish to vote for our moderator, please do so now. Ernie, would you please step forward? Aye.
Aye. Ernest Hilton.
Do swear.
Do swear, affirm.
That you will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So long as you shall continue a citizen thereon?
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereon.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Ernest Hilton.
Do swear.
Do swear, affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my abilities.
Your duties incumbent upon me?
The duties incumbent upon me?
As moderator of this meeting?
As moderator of this meeting.
According to the Constitution and the laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Marty Hilton. I have a longstanding law practice down here on Beale Street right across the town office. If you get this friend at the town office, he wants to come over and see me. There's Article 1, to choose me as a moderator. Article 1, I always have Article 1A, which I need a motion for, which is to adopt the main moderator's manual, sixth edition, edition 2005, as the guidance for this meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all opposed, it's a vote. And I'm, we're going to go, pass over Article 2 for the moment to Article 3.
Thanks, Ernie. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the information that's in front of you tonight. We can jump right to a couple of things. Thanks to Mrs. Ducharme, the cat's out of the bag, right? I am going to take a position with Somerset County starting on July 10th. So I look back at the last 10 years as kind of a window, a window where we saw a significant loss in valuation back in 2014 when Madison Paper started to get into their process of eventually closing down. You know, the tax rate went up three points, we liquidated $2 million out of our savings, and we didn't know what we were going to do. I'd like to think that the team and I accomplished quite a bit over the last 10 years to leave Madison in a better place. And you know, you've got Timber HP, which is in production now, and they'll be bringing on another phase of production in July and August, and then their third and most profitable phase of production will start probably in the fall or close to November, December. So some good things are happening down there. They've already hired 80 people, many of your friends and family have taken jobs there, and so it's a good thing. We've also got housing development, we've also got transportation projects that we're working on, and we're trying to see what we can do to develop more childcare in our area, all things that a working community needs. But to put it bluntly, this past year had its ups and downs. We lost several key people at the town office in the town highway department. We had controversy over personnel decisions, decisions that I made. We had a recall of an elected official, in the first time that many people could ever remember happening. Those are challenges for a community, and they're difficult. But ups and downs, we have hired some good people. I believe that the positions that are in place now are well-suited for whomever will come after me as town manager. The selectmen have taken some steps in that regard. They have entered into a contract with a young man named Mitchell Berkowitz, and Mitch is a veteran. I say young man, he's a little older than I am. Mitch is a veteran of Maine and New England local small-town governments. He has done what he's proposing to do with Madison nine times before in different communities around the area. He will serve as the interim town manager, and he will also facilitate the search for a new town manager. And so I am confident that the town, the town office staff, and everyone is in good hands in that regard. I've had the pleasure of working with a great staff, different people have come and gone over the years, I've really enjoyed working with every one of them. I've enjoyed working with great selectmen, and I want to just recognize Chairman Benziano, who due to recovering from surgery could not be here tonight, but he has been my board chair for the last eight years, and communicating with him has always been easy and productive, and he's been incredibly supportive, and I think he's done a wonderful job as the chair of the board of selectmen. Tomorrow's election day, you'll have choices to make for select board, school board, other appointments, and if you haven't already done so, I encourage you to get out and vote tomorrow. One of the names you're going to see on the ballot is Mike Gordon. Mike is the only candidate on the ballot for road commissioner, and since he was the only one, the selectman on my recommendation invited him to start working for the town a little over a month ago, and Mike has done good work, and I think you'll see in the packet a list of some of the things that the highway crew has been working on in the month of May and early on into June. I was glad to see Mike come on board because that means my five-month tenure as interim road commissioner was over, and it was a good experience for me. I was glad to give the phone away, but it was an overall good experience because I got to interact with crew members that have worked for the town much longer than I have, but I've never had the opportunity to interact with them directly. We have new people up there, first-time highway workers like Matt Focadot and Nick Dagel, they did a great job. We have our seasonal workers, Alan Thibodeau, Nick Rollins, Megan Corson, they come and help us in the winter season, and they work alongside veterans like Peter Dow and Billy Pierce. Now Billy's retiring in August, and he has made it abundantly clear, you ask him, he'll tell you how many days, hours, and minutes he's left until he retires. Billy, if you know him, he has saved this town thousands of dollars over his time as our mechanic in the highway department because he has built and rebuilt just about everything up there, and he will be sorely missed. His sunny demeanor will be sorely missed, and his ability to fix just about everything will be sorely missed, so I appreciate him. And then there's Peter Payne. Thirty-five years Peter Payne has been working for the town, and when he needed to step up this winter, because without a road commissioner and without a foreman, there's only a limited amount of things that we can do, and Peter stepped up, he took that former position that he had had years ago, he knew where everything was, he knew how to lead the crew, he knew how to respond to calls in the middle of the night, and I really appreciate the work that Peter Payne did for the town and for the highway department this past winter. Let's talk about the budget that's before you tonight. Our budget, our municipal budget is an increase, and I say that because everywhere I've been there, municipal and other budgets have increased. You've got, just this past March, Anson and Nordwalk both passed 10% increases. The county budget is up 10%, the school budget is up this year. This is the reality of the world that we live in right now with inflated costs for just about everything. I want to draw your attention to a couple of things in particular. Under general government, you've got a full-time code officer and facilities maintenance position. We've been working towards this position for several years. This budget includes full funding for this position, and I am pleased to say that the select board and the budget committee both wholeheartedly agreed with funding that position. And policing services, the fact of the matter is, you're paying $589,000 for three patrolling deputies in Madison. So the fact of the matter is, you are paying more for less when it comes to policing, but that is also the nature of the reality that you're dealing with in this world. Hiring law enforcement is difficult on every level, state level, municipal level, and county level. There are just more openings than there are people willing to fill them. One of the reasons the budget is up is because the union contract that was just negotiated between the sheriff and the FOP for the deputies saw a substantial increase in pay, good for the deputies, difficult on everybody else's budget. But Somerset County had been the lowest-paying law enforcement entity in the state, and now they've tried to raise that up so they can be competitive with Kennebec and the other surrounding areas around them. That just means we pay more for police? Every year I hear chatter about, well, should we look into reinstating our own police department? And I think that's a discussion worth having. I think that you need to have it soon. Don't wait to have that discussion in February. Start talking about it now. Start talking about what you want out of a police department, but I can guarantee you, it won't be cheaper. To build your own police department and rebuild it from scratch will be more than what you're paying the county for. So policing services is an increase. You'll also see sprinkled through the budget a couple of places where we are raising additional funds for road and sewer work, road reconstruction. These are projects that the sanitary district and the town had on the schedule back in 2014, took off the schedule when we saw the decrease in value and the increase in our taxes, but now we're getting back to the place where we need to do them. Road reconstruction means you tear it all up, you dig it all the way down, take out the sewer pipes, replace the water pipes, catch basins, and all of that stuff that has to go along with it. It's pretty substantial. Between the sewer and the town, each one of these projects will probably budget out about $1 million. Now the sewer district will pay their portion, the town portion will probably be between $300,000 and $400,000. But we've targeted several areas to do this reconstruction over the next five years, Bean Street, Houghton Street, Heald Street, and the first part of Preble Avenue. If you've traveled over those roads in February, you know exactly why we need to do this reconstruction, because they're in very difficult shape. So those are some of the highlights on the budget. Let's talk about your taxes. While we can't have a crystal ball and determine what your taxes are going to be come August, I can tell you they're going to be higher than they were last year, and that's mainly because all the budgets are up, school, county, and municipal, and your valuations of your property has to go up. Because of the market that we are in with housing crisis, we are falling behind. We are currently valued at 77% of market. The state requires us to be at least 90% of market or higher. If we don't raise valuations, they claw back money that they give us for homestead exemptions, state education, revenue sharing, that sort of thing. It's a significant amount of money they hold back if we don't get to 90%. We've tried little increments over the last couple of years, raising it 3%, 5%, you may have seen a little bit of adjustment. You're going to see a more significant adjustment in your property values this year, mainly because we have properties that are valued at $70,000 that are selling for $150,000. We have properties that are valued at $150,000 that are selling for $250,000, $275,000. The market will level off, but we have to raise our valuations. We won't raise them all the way to market value, but they'll go up between 10%, 15%, in some cases 20%, the newer the property, probably the higher the valuation goes up. So be on the lookout for a letter in late June from Shirley Bartlett, our assessor's agent. It should have a comparison in there, what your current property value is and what your anticipated property value will be, and then the selectmen will have the opportunity to set the tax rate in August. When the valuation goes up, the tax rate usually goes down, but because of the substantial increase in valuation and budgets being increased, even though the tax rate goes down, most likely your tax bill will go up. We've done some forecasting, it can range anywhere from an increase of $200, $300, $400, depending on the value of your property. So that's something you'll have an opportunity, hopefully, to look at in June and ask questions and interact with the assessor's agent as that goes on. So there are 325 people, and I bet you there's a handful of them in the room here that filled out that form last December that said, "I don't want my taxes to go up." It's called tax stabilization, state law was passed last year. For those 325 people that applied for it last year, your taxes won't go up, your property value will go up, but the amount you pay will stay the same as what you paid this year, and the state will reimburse the town for the difference. This is the first year out of the gate for this program, we'll see how it works, we'll see how it goes. If you're 65 or older, you live in your own home and you have for more than 10 years, then you'd be qualified to sign up again this coming year. Right now, it's still a sign-up every-year program, so even though you signed up for it last year, by the time we have the forms in the fall of this year, it'll be good if you come and sign up this year. So, all right. That's a lot, isn't it? Thanks for the opportunity to serve. Have a great town week.
Thank you for that little salute. Article 3. And I might point out that the lighting in here is not the best because some people are well-lit, others are complete darkness, so I try to catch people's hands up. I don't mean to skip anybody. Usually Tim catches it, or somebody else does. Please let me know if you have any kind of a question or comment to concern. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to pay the directors of the Department of Electric Works $10,200 for the ensuing year, said sum to be paid from the funds of the department. Select board recommends yes. Do I hear a motion? And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, to call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards, downed cards, all opposed, it's a vote. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $11,200 to pay its select board. Advisory board recommends yes, and the compensation is actually included in Article 6, so I know who tells me. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, to call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards, downed cards, all opposed, it's a vote. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to use up to $25,000 from an undesigned revenue in the event of overdrafts, unforeseen events, or emergencies. Any use of this contingency arrangement must be voted on at a select board meeting, and the expenditures paid will be listed on the subsequent town report. Total transfer of undesigned revenues shall not exceed $25,000 within the fiscal year. Transfer of undesigned revenues in excess of $25,000 must be authorized by a town meeting vote. Select board recommends yes, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, to call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards, downed cards, all opposed, it's a vote. Article 6, to see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for the general government account in the general fund. Administration, $573,680. Planning board, $5,725. Code enforcement, facilities maintenance, $81,700. Boards and committees, $10,440. Assessing services, $45,000. Elections, $8,000. For total expenses of $733,545. Using approved revenue from the TIF of $30,000, the total worth to be raised by taxation is $73,545. The select board recommends that amount, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a motion, any second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a comment, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I just, I heard under boards and committees, you said $10,440. It's $19,440. The bottom sum is correct, but I thought I heard you say $10,000.
Okay, nothing corrected, $19,440. We have a total to be raised by taxation of $73,545. Select board recommends that amount, as does the advisory board. Does you, whoever made the motion, is it your understanding?
Yes.
And the second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards, downed cards, all opposed, it's a vote. Article 7, to see what sum the town will vote to raise appropriate for public safety in the general fund. Ambulance, $81,000. Police, $589,325.7. Fire, $138,400. Animal control, $6,950. For a total of expenses of $815,675.7. Approved revenue from TIF to be used is $20,000. Total to be raised from taxation, $795,675.7, which is an amount recommended by the select board and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
Regarding the police, could one of the selectmen please describe what is covered under that $589,000? I mean, if we're talking, Tim said three officers, we're paying our administrative board, which is basically the girls in the office, $574,000, and for the sheriff's department, the police part of it, we're paying $589,000. What's the biggest break in the cost? Is it the wages we're paying them, the amount of coverage, are we paying for cruises and equipment, or what else are we covering?
I can answer that if you want.
I'd rather have, I'd rather have the select board, if possible, answer it so they can tell me what they are authorizing to pay.
They all love doctors, huh? I guess basically it was everything you said. Everything went up. I mean, we only have three police officers, they're going to be around, we have dispatch downstairs, and this is what, this is all you get for your money.
So those three officers, when they are on duty, they are specifically doing services for the town of Madison?
Correct. Sometimes they can be called out on emergency, but all the other time they're supposed to be, and it's not three on at a time.
Right. It's a rotating, but you have three officers that rotate in for, which is shift coverage from 8:00 AM in the morning to 8:00 at night, or?
Six AM to two.
Six AM to two? Six AM to two.
To 2:00 AM.
Six AM to 6:00 PM, so no coverage from 6:00 PM to?
No, 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. There's four hours where there's call-out coverage.
But we're paying for how many cruises for that, that coverage?
Three.
We're paying for three cruises?
Yep.
Three men and equipment, I'm assuming pistols and whatever else they've got, tasers or whatever else they have for equipment. That seems like a lot of money to me. I mean, I, I know rates are going up awful high, it might be something, as Tim said, we want to start discussing level one police force and how much coverage we want. I mean, the way I see it right now as a taxpaying citizen, if we say no to that item, the county's going to pick it up anyways. The response time may not be as quick, but they will still have the deep, long wood to do the work. That's just my opinion.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing yes?
The question is, if we did pay it and say no to it, what happens then? Say somebody calls for help, what's the process?
So very good question, and to the gentleman's point over here, if, say hypothetically, you chose not to pay that amount at this town meeting tonight, the county budget has already been passed, and it does not have money for three additional deputies, so what you would end up doing would be reducing the overall county deputies from 19 to 16 if you chose to do that. You wouldn't be able to have the county pick it up until next fiscal year. To your point, if you did operate similar to our neighboring towns like Nordwalk and Anson, where you just pay your county tax and that's what you're paying for, for sheriff's coverage, the response is, is what it is, and right now, even with the three deputies that we have, response times ten you strain, especially if, even if you've got a one deputy covering Madison and near East Madison, then you can get to the other part of town. So there's no easy way to put a number on it as far as the time it takes to respond, but obviously if you eliminate three deputy positions for the county, that will have a negative impact on response time.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing yes?
Does the state police cut out completely, they get a call, they will not respond?
So according to the sheriff, there has been a significant change in the policy of coverage by the state police, and they are no longer responding to local and regional calls, they are mainly patrolling the interstates, and that is their directive that has come out, and so to anticipate a state trooper responding to a local call, it's not going to happen.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards, downed cards, all opposed, it's a vote. Article 8, to see To see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for the public utilities account in the general fund. Streetlights, $65,000. Municipal solid waste and recycling, $290,000. Storm drains, $100,000. Fire protection, parentheses, hydrants, $275,000. For total expenses of $730,000. Reduced by approved revenue from TIF of $30,000. Total to be raised from taxation is $700,000, which is recommended by the select board and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? I need, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article nine, to see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for the public works account in the general fund. Public works, $799,550. Reduced by approved revenue from TIF of $35,000. For total to be raised by taxation of $764,550, which is the amount recommended by the select board and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article ten. To see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for the recreation account in the general fund. Select Board recommends $87,450. The advisory board also recommends $87,450. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article eleven. To see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for the cemeteries in the general fund. Select Board recommends $48,475. The advisory board also recommends $48,475. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article twelve. To see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for community services in the general fund. General assistance, $17,500. Among community programs, the U.S. Naval Sea Cadets Corps, $1,000. The Lake Association, $5,500. American Legion flags, $600. People Who Care food cupboard, $16,500. Recycling, HHW, $1,000. Lakewood Theater, $5,000. St. Sebastian Cemetery, $1,000. Madison Business Alliance, $3,000. For total of community programs of $33,600. Among service organizations, we have Madison-Anson Teenage Citizens, $4,500. Somerset Humane Society, $8,100. Hospice Volunteers of Somerset County, $3,000. Spectrum Generations, $5,000. For total of service organizations of $20,600. The grand total of community services is $71,700. Reduced by the approved revenue from TIF of $5,000. Select Board recommends $66,700, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article thirteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for the Madison Public Library in the general fund. Select Board recommends $136,150, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move is read.
Uh, so move the recommended amount?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Although it's, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your hand cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. To see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for town-owned property account in the general fund. The select board recommends $35,900, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion? We need to move the recommended amount. I think that's your intent. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article fifteen. To see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for road surface projects. Select Board recommends $230,000, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
So move the recommended amount?
Yes.
Is that your motion? Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article sixteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for highway equipment purchases. Select Board recommends $150,000, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move the recommended amount.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article seventeen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for sidewalk maintenance. Select Board recommends $25,000, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move the recommended amount.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article eighteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for cemetery repairs. Select Board recommends $25,000, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move the recommended.
We have a motion for the recommended amount. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article nineteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise inappropriate for fire equipment. Select Board recommends $50,000, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move the recommended.
We have, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 from coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the American Rescue Plan Act or APPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for highway equipment purchases. Select Board recommends yes, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move the recommended amount.
Oh no, you're recommending that we so do this.
Yeah.
Okay. And we have, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $150,000 from the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the American Rescue Plan Act or APPA funds, received by the town from the federal government for road reconstruction projects. Select Board recommends yes, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move, yes.
So move, yes. We have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to carry forward $103,500 in unspent capital funds to be designated for the purchase of highway equipment. Select Board and the advisory board both recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns?
We're running mine for equipment. That's the third one for equipment.
So this is a carry forward amount. So this amount was raised at town meeting last year. The trucks, when we order them, take 16 months to come in. So we haven't actually received this truck yet, although it's already been ordered. So we need to carry forward the funds to pay for it. It's a single axle pile truck.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to carry forward $15,000 in unspent capital funds to be designated for repairs to the Forest Hill Cemetery. Select Board and the advisory board both recommend yes. Do I hear a motion? So move, we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
We have to correct into Article twenty-three, not twenty-two. I think you said twenty-two.
Yeah.
I did?
Yeah.
Well, this is Article twenty-three, I'm sorry. And I'll just go through it. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to carry forward $15,000 in unspent capital funds to be designated for repairs to the Forest Hill Cemetery. Select Board and the advisory board both recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So...
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
What's the difference between this and the other cemetery?
So the $25,000 that we passed earlier in this warrant was to raise new money. We don't anticipate spending all the money we raised last year. Last year, we raised $50,000. We're only going to spend $30-some thousand of that before the end of the year. So we want to add what we didn't spend to it. This is something that you'll see, I'm assuming, on recurring town meetings going forward just because there's much work to be done in the cemeteries.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
Do we do any other cemeteries out of the forest hill?
So the, most of the work that needs to be done, especially in the turf, is in Forest Hills. We do have other monies that are dedicated to the other 10 smaller cemeteries.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. It's a vote. Article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to use $700,000 from undesigned fund balance to offset taxes. Select Board recommends yes, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards. All those opposed, it's a vote. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to allocate the balance of the snow bill excise tax refund to the Adenaki Snow Riders Summer Bill Club. Select Board recommends yes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes for the year 2024, 2025, not yet due or assessed. The select board recommends yes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote the date of September 15, 2023, or 30 days after commitment, whichever is later, as the date when the first one half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, and the date of March 15, 2024, when the second one half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, with taxes unpaid after said dates to bear interest at the rate of 8% per annum from said dates. The select board recommends yes. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to call for a vote. Although it's a favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. This is my favorite. Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to enter into a standard agreement with residential taxpayers establishing a tax club payment plan for property taxes whereby, one, the taxpayer agrees to pay specified monthly payments to the town based on his or her estimated and actual tax obligation for the current year property taxes. Two, the town agrees not to charge interest on timely payments made pursuant to the tax club agreement. Three, the town authorizes the collector to accept tax club payments for current taxes which may be due prior to the commitment of those taxes. Four, the agreement is automatically terminated if a scheduled payment is late and the taxpayer then becomes subject and the taxpayer then becomes subject to the same due date and interest date and rates as other taxpayers who are not participating in tax club; five, only taxpayers who do not have any outstanding tax obligations for prior tax years are eligible to participate in the tax club program; and six, taxpayers wishing to participate in a tax club for a particular property tax year shall enter into an agreement with the town by a publicly advertised deadline determined by the tax collector. The select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
So, isn't this going to put a lot of strain on our town office employees who already have a lot on their plate?
So, this is, language has been in here long before I was here. This is something the tax club, we've done every year, and generally, we have three thousand tax accounts, about a hundred people sign up for the tax club, so it really doesn't put a whole lot of strain. There's a lot of busy work associated with it in September, but after that, it's pretty much automatic.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to advertise and sell town-owned personal property at public sale, select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
When this says advertise, what specifically do you mean by advertise? How do you advertise that?
So this is for personal property, this would be like an equipment, like an older truck, or something like that. Typically, we would either put an ad in a local newspaper, or we'd do it online, put an ad on our website. Sometimes, if we have enough personal property, we'll hire an auctioneer, and he'll do the promotion.
Yes.
So this is only property, we're not talking about land, it's just equipment and the like?
Correct, there are two upcoming articles that deal with real estate, land. This one deals with just equipment.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to dispose of town-owned property in any manner that the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town, and the select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Yeah. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
You're in the dark, but we see you.
So, if nothing is changing in the wording of how property is disposed of, it'll still be up to the selectmen to decide if it's going to be two and a butter, which could be friend or relative, or it would be put up to everyone in the town to purchase the property? Is that correct?
That's correct, so this, you need this article in a town meeting warrant to authorize the selectmen to sell a piece of town-owned property. There's another article that comes up that's specific to tax-acquired property, but it's similar. And, the reason that that should be is that the selectmen doesn't have the authority to sell any property unless you, as the town meeting, give it to them. In reference to what you're referring to, the selectmen can then also create a policy that will guide them in how they will go through the steps of advertising, promoting, and offering property to people. They've asked me to work on that, I gave them a draft at the last meeting, at the selectmen's meeting on the twenty-sixth, they'll be finalizing that draft of the policy that carries out what this gives them the authority to do.
Yes, sir.
So, can you give us some assurances about what this, what this is giving the select board permission to do? I'm thinking back to the property on Weston Ave. that was sold for almost nothing to a developer. In the future, I'd like to see that there be some announcement, something, some, some information to the town about what's happening, rather than it just moving forward without any of us knowing exactly what you're doing. So, can you speak to that?
Well, you bring up a good point, and I think there's some lessons learned from that process. We did have two public hearings, but the public hearings were far too late in the process. To your point, we should have done a better job at notifying the neighbors around that area what the developers were working on, and why the selectmen agreed to sell that property, or at least a portion of that property, for a dollar. Housing development needs to be incentivized, and you can either do that by giving them a break on their taxes, or creating a TIF with a credit enhancement, or by dedicating a piece of land for development. That's what the town did with that Weston Ave. property. So there's no tax breaks on this property, they'll pay the full amount of property taxes on properties that will probably be worth two or three million dollars. So it's a pretty significant tax income to the town on a property that had not generated taxes in a hundred years. But to your point, again, this article authorizes the select board to do this, but again, we will institute, and I will recommend, and we have instituted some policies that will do the public part of it earlier in the process. So, for that particular parcel of the fifty-five Weston Avenue, the deed has been transferred, so it's that, the northern portion of that property now belongs to the developers. They've been doing tests, digging at the site now, to prepare for their foundations, and they plan to have buildings there, at least two buildings, with eighteen units there by the end of this year. That's all that they were approved for in their funding package through Main Housing. If they want to add more buildings there, they would have to go back to Main Housing to get a funding package, and come back to the select board to secure the land. So that's where that process is.
So, just for clarification, when this says that we're giving the select board permission to deal with the land, how do they see fit? Does that come with the caveat that it will be explained to the town what the plans are before going ahead and doing it?
That's what the policy is. Now, the policy's not here in the warrant, but the policy is to get the information out faster, especially to the butters, the immediate people that are impacted by it.
And if there are town members that find that this is not appealing to them, is there a process that this can be addressed? I just feel like that was a big cluster on Weston Ave., and I can see this happening again, if there's not some sort of curve to what's, what the town select board's allowed to do.
Well, again, I would say utilize the systems that are already in place. The fifty-five Weston Avenue project was talked about in several public meetings prior to going to the planning board. If you're able to watch the meetings on YouTube, or watch them on Channel eleven, or attend the meetings in person, and if you have concerns about the process, attend the meeting and bring it up as a citizen's concern, so the board can, you know, address the issue.
I have a question, Jim. How does the council determine to acquire property for non-paying taxes? Do they let a person let their taxes run for a while and not pay them? At what point does the town step in and acquire property but not pay the tax?
I think this is inappropriate.
So this, that, your question pertains to an upcoming article, to address it now?
We'll wait till then, I think. This is our property which is already owned by the town. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yeah.
Well, we vote yes the way this is written. We'll give them any manner they see fit, and we'll be locked into that.
It will be, you're giving them the broad authority in this article, however, their decisions have to be made in public, and it has to be discussed and put on an agenda that is set out.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Yeah.
Tim, I kind of feel like that whole thing should have been, you know, I understand that you couldn't, someone like me, I'm not here all the time to see what's going on in the town, and then, you know, I may pick it up on the scuttlebutt. My, my concern with all of that is that that should have been off the bed. You know, that property, the article should somehow lead that that could be, that should have been a bid property, because someone like myself might want to have been there and developed, I don't mind the people that live around me, you know? I mean, they eat, eat the rest as well, but I'm just saying, I would like to have had a shot at developing that property, and there was no way that I would have had, I knew anything about it, how profitable it is about it the other day, you know?
So, development of fifty-five Weston Avenue has been going on for five years, and we have put out RFPs twice, for people to, and again, five years ago, the housing market wasn't near what it is now, and the state had not put in near amount of money as there is now. But, we have publicly asked for proposals for housing on that site since 2018.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Before we vote on Article thirty, seeing none, going to call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to approve all wages and salaries for the coming year except for those already provided for, select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize this town manager, under the direction of the select board, to apply for grant monies and to expend monies received for the stated grant purposes. Select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Is that a comment? Okay. Seeing none, going to call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. I kind of stumbled there. To see if the town, in accordance with thirty-six Main Revised Statute, tenet to section five or six A, will vote to fix the rate of four percent interest to be paid on overpaid or abated taxes, select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? All those, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to accept any money or property, real or personal, from any donor, and such money or property shall be utilized as specified by the donor. Select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article thirty-five, shall an ordinance entitled Site Plan Review, chapter four eighty-four, be amended? I have a note here. The town of Madison Code of Ordinance, chapter forty-four, Article seven, creates special criteria for projects that involve cell towers, windmills, solar arrays, battery storage units, and salvage yards. When the change was put into effect in 2021, the town had caps on commercial building permit fees. In 2022, a new fee schedule was adopted that is based on square foot with no caps, thus eliminated the need to double capped building permits for projects in Article seven. The site review fee remains doubled for these projects, two hundred fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. Proposed change in language, fees, due to the complicated nature of the projects in Article seven, the fee for site review will be doubled for projects that fall within sections forty-four to thirty-eight, and forty-four thirty-nine, forty-four forty, forty-four forty-one, and forty-four forty-two. Select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, that is a vote. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to dispose of tax-acquired property in any manner that the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town, except that the select board shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six Main Revised Statute, section nine forty-three C., for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owner. And, I have a note here, this article refers to Title thirty-six, Main Revised Statute, section nine forty-three C., which requires the town to follow a specific process for the sale of tax-acquired property in the event that the prior owners are over the age of sixty-five, meet specific lower to moderate income thresholds, and reside in a home with a homestead exemption. Select board recommends yes, do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
So, does this mean in tax-acquired property, like Baguette Road, that one time it can be sold to a butters, and one time it can be put out for auction, that we have no persistence to be sold?
So, I'll refer back to my previous comment on the previous article, that was why they asked for a more detailed policy. The policy's not in the town meeting warrant, but the policy will be abided by, by the board, assuming they approve it at the meeting on the twenty-sixth of June.
Yes, sir.
Is this where my question comes in? How does the board determine at which point a person in arrears to their taxes in total or entire, before they say they will take it?
Most every municipality follows state law in this, and it's the tax lien process. If your taxes are not paid by a certain time, a window between eight and twelve months after they are committed, then the town would issue a lien on that. That lien automatically matures in eighteen months, and if there's any funds remaining unpaid, that foreclosure date automatically happens. Typically, we lien in July, and we foreclose eighteen months later, which would be the next, next February. So once that lien is in place, there's no decision by the board to take a property, it happens automatically with foreclosure. Then it goes to the board, to her point, and they decide how to dispose of it. They may sell it back to the previous owner if all the taxes are paid and they're living in the house. They may choose to tear the property down, as we did recently on Park Street. And so, those are the processes that go to the board, but as far as foreclosure on liens, it's automatic. And, while I have the floor, I'm the tax collector for the next three weeks, so I'm sending out thirty-day lien notices a little early this year. I doubt any of you will get a letter from me that are here tonight, but if you have family or friends that haven't paid their twenty-two taxes, please let them know.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. I now need to have a motion to recess to a time certain, and that time certain being Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at eight o'clock in the morning, to take up Article two. Do I hear a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any questions, comments, thoughts, or concerns? Seeing none, going to call for vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed. So, some of you will be back somewhere, if you're voting tomorrow, if you open right after school. Make sure you go.